Hey everybody, welcome back to our study in the Book of Joshua and the rest of the Bible. So we are in session seventeen as we've kind of diverted from the actual Book of Joshua to explore some other topics that will hopefully tie back in. But we want to just say thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you've been with us since the beginning, kudos to you, thank yous. I'm humbled to be with you again tonight. If you're joining us for the first time, we would love for you to get our notes. We send out a packet of notes each week. You can get those live or right now from our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. Whitestonechurchtx.com, go to the video dropdown on our toolbar and you'll see Joshua, part, our number session seventeen. And you could download the PDF, print that out, have it on your laptop, whatever's best for you. If you'd like to be part of our mailing list, also on our website, whitestonechurchtx.com, go to the contact us. My dad is so faithful to send out a weekly email list. We'll put you on our prayer list, we could send you other updates. We won't inundate your inbox, we promise. But about once a week you'll get something from us and we would love to include you in that mailing list. So grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes and let's dive into tonight's study. So at the front of your list here, we, I've highlighted that we're going to talk about the temple, the altar, Jesus, the blood, the cross, Holy Spirit, Pentecost. That's a lot, encapsulate a lot in there and then the end times and the flood in Matthew twenty-four and twenty-five. And we'll dig deep into that section of scripture for sure. And so I just want to recap this a little bit over the, over last week. We talked about the last days and end time spirits. It's on page one of your notes. And when we talk about end time spirits, these are demonic spirits that are attacking the world globally and territorially they are zeroing in on specific cities or regions on the globe or on the earth. They specifically zero in specifically on people. And so when we talk about end time spirits, we talk about a religious spirit. So let's talk about a religious spirit for a minute. A religious spirit is a demonic spirit that has obviously been around since the days of Jesus. The religious spirit of the enemy would rise up in traditionally religious leaders. And they would accuse or attack any movement of the Holy Spirit. So anytime a believer operates in the Holy Ghost, anytime you do something that you are led by the Holy Spirit to do, in today's age, it is very prevalent that a religious spirit operating in someone else will rise up and say, hey, you're not doing it right. Hey, that's not correct. Hey, you don't understand the Bible. Hey, you're too young as a believer, you can't do those things. For example, you know, you may be telling somebody about Jesus and the enemy and an inside voice will say, hey, you're not qualified, you don't know, you didn't, you didn't say that Bible verse good enough. You need to, you need to go ask Pastor Cameron or you need to go look at a concordance or you need to go look at, and let somebody else. Leave that witness and stuff up to the professionals if you will. Well, that's a religious voice, that's a religious spirit. A religious spirit may speak through somebody when they make fun of what somebody else wears to church. A religious spirit may say, hey, the pastor isn't interpreting scripture correctly. And I'm not talking about heretical interpretation, but the preacher, you know, on TV, he's a hypocrite, he's a false prophet. A religious spirit is a spirit that will quench or throw water on the Holy Spirit. Here's a real life example. Had a friend of mine who, who had a really cool testimony to share, not, not like their life testimony. They just had a story that they were ready to share with a group of Christians, a group of people. And so they sat down, they were all excited and they were like, man, let me tell you what God did this last week in my life. And they started to share this, this, this great story of what God had done in their life. And somebody at the table with their arms crossed says, you know what? You're way too excited about Jesus right now. And I think what you're saying, you're, you're all about emotion, you're not, you're not grounded in the word of God. You know, we need to, we need to really analyze what you're saying and dissect it with scripture. And all of a sudden, my friend, it's just like the wind was taken out of their sails, like somebody sucker punched them. That is a religious spirit. So a religious spirit doesn't attack people in a bar, doesn't attack people traditionally at a party. A religious spirit traditionally operates in the church. And what Satan wants to do is to get the end time church. Now, when I say end time church, it's the church that we're in today because the return of Christ is very soon. So what the enemy wants, Satan doesn't care that we have church, just have religious church. He doesn't care if you have religion, what he cares is if you have the Holy Spirit. Do you have the Holy Ghost? Are you moving and operating in the Holy Ghost? In Matthew twenty-eight and Mark sixteen, in scripture, Jesus in both of those references says, hey, you go into all the world, make disciples, baptize them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Cast out demons, step on the heads of snakes, drink, don't be afraid if somebody poisons you. Don't be afraid of, if somebody tries to harm you, tries to curse you, speak in new tongues, cast out devils, lay hands on the sick. A religious spirit will prevent you from doing those things. But the Holy Spirit will lead you into those things. Let me tell you a sure sign that you got the Holy Spirit. A sure sign that you got the Holy Spirit is that God is leading you into doing things that you're unqualified to do. Let me repeat that. A sure sign that you've got the Holy Spirit is God is leading you to do something you're unqualified to do. So if you find yourself preaching at work or teaching a Bible study, but you've never been to seminary or you've never been to Bible class one oh one or whatever, don't be surprised that that's the leading of the Holy Spirit. A religious spirit will say, hey, you're not qualified. You've not been to Bible school, you've only been a Christian for two years. You, you know, don't you remember you were a drunkard? How dare you talk to somebody about getting set free from alcohol? Whatever, that's a religious voice. So when we talk about end time spirits, that religious spirit is, is unfortunately seems to be very prevalent in the world today. A second end time spirit on your list is an anti-Christ spirit. We've talked about this before, but in first John, it talks about that an anti-Christ spirit has been in the world since the crucifixion of Jesus. An anti-Christ spirit is a spirit that is anti-Christ. Now, he, this spirit won't on the surface be anti-Jesus. Now, let's just dissect that real fast. Jesus Christ is, is how we would reference the Son of God. Jesus is his Hebrew name, his, his name that God gave him through, via the archangel Michael or Gabriel. Christ is his label, Christ is his position, Christ was his, his job. So the world cannot deny the existence of Jesus. It's historically proven in thousands of documents outside of the Bible that Jesus the Person lived, that he was in Galilee, in Nazareth, Bethlehem, that he died at the hands of a Roman crucifixion. So to deny Jesus the Man is as foolish as the people in the recent past who tried to deny the Holocaust, that Hitler murdered six million plus Jews. Those are just, you know, a very minute fraction of people who are not even giving any credibility to any kind of historical evidence. The truth is, Jesus the Man walked the earth, preached, healed, died on a cross at the hands of a Roman crucifixion. What the enemy will not do is he won't debate the existence of Jesus. He won't even negate if you religiously, now I'm using that word specifically, he won't even negate if you religiously worship Jesus. He has no problem with people wearing a cross around their neck, going to church, praying if you will to Jesus in a religious function. What the enemy cannot stand and abhors is the position, the title, the declaration of Christ. Now, Jesus Christ, Christ is not his last name, Christ is his title. So for example, we would say Donald Trump President. You separate the two, Barack Obama President, George W. Bush President, Ronald Reagan President, John F. Kennedy President. So, so when, when the president walks in the room, we know that, hey, that's the person that's in office. We understand that that person and the title and his position and his name, they coincide, they intermingle, but we can distinguish between the man and the position. We can disagree with the person, we can not like the person, but we're to honor the office or honor the position. Here's the problem with Jesus being the Christ. If Jesus is the Christ, then no one else can be the Christ. Because Christ means Messiah, Savior, chosen one, Son of God, the Messiah, the one sent from God, the Savior of the world. So you cannot worship Jesus Christ and also worship Mohammed. And you cannot worship Jesus the Christ and also worship Hindu gods or goddesses. You cannot worship Christ and still belong to the Mormon church and, and call Jesus a little God or a one of millions or thousands of gods. So when we say Jesus Christ, we mean Jesus the Messiah, Jesus the chosen one, Jesus who paid the price, the way. Jesus says, I am the way, I am the truth, I am the life, I am the Christ. So the spirit that's anti-Christ is a spirit that says, hey, listen, if you believe that Jesus is the only way to heaven, if you believe Jesus is the only way that God pays for your sins, if you believe he is the Savior singular, then we're against you or that spirit is against you. So what an anti-Christ spirit is doing in the world today is, is trying to get us to believe in many Christs, many ways to heaven. Hey, Hare Krishna is one way to Christ, or I'm sorry, one way to heaven. The Hindus have one way to heaven, the Buddhists have one way to heaven, the Muslims have one way to heaven, the Jehovah Witnesses, the Mormons, hey, we're all God's children. Hey, we're all God's sons and daughters. That's not true, we're all God's creation. We have to be born again to be adopted sons and daughters of the King. So when we hear the word anti-Christ spirit, the anti-Christ is already in the world today. And what's happening is the anti-Christ spirit is paving the way for us to receive, consume, and accept the anti-Christ. Much as John the Baptist was the forerunner of Jesus, much as all the prophets in the Old Testament were forerunners, they were foretelling Jesus to prepare the way. The anti-Christ spirit is preparing the way for us to accept and consume the anti-Christ. And so when we look at end time spirits, religious spirits and an anti-Christ spirit go hand in hand. Then we have a nemesis spirit, which is the Jezebel spirit. A Jezebel spirit is one that is sexually perverse and teaches God's children, according to Revelation two, to the church of Thyretara, that this, this spirit operates again in the church. All three of these spirits are in the church. Let me back up on the anti-Christ spirit in the church. The anti-Christ spirit in the church doesn't want pastors to say, Jesus is the only way. Hey, Jesus is one of many ways, or Jesus is a way. So the anti-Christ spirit is in the world, but it's attacking the church. And it's attacking the church with, with a message of toleration, just accept, like, you're such a, you're such a narrow-minded bigot, you're such a, you know, you're so intolerant if you don't accept all these other ways. A Jezebel spirit comes into the church against the body of Christ and it, and it comes in subtly to get us to do two things. And you can look this up for yourself in the scripture, Revelation chapter two, to the church of Thyretara. The Jezebel spirit wants God's sons and daughters to do two things. One, eat food sacrificed to idols. Now, we're not talking about hamburgers and Twinkies and hot dogs or steaks. We're not talking about food that is literally taken before an idol and sacrificed and, and then we're given tainted food. Now, now that, you know, is not, that's not what scripture is talking about. It's talking about food. Jesus says, man doesn't live by bread alone, but by every word that proceedeth from the mouth of God. So Jesus equates food with words, foods with theology. So a Jezebel spirit is in the church today, teaching sons and daughters of God to consume demonic theology, to consume evolution as an option to creation, to consume that, hey, the word of God has been so mistranslated, we can't really trust it. It's, it's not the inerrant word of God, it's the errant word of God. Teaching us theology that says, you know what, it doesn't really matter what you do in the flesh. God doesn't really care what you do in the body, he's just saving your soul. Now, now that, that is a subtle message and some of you might go, well, that, I think that's correct. No, it's not correct. Jezebel spirit wants us to believe that it doesn't matter what we do in the flesh because God's saving our soul. Now here's the truth, God isn't saving our bodies, our bodies are dying, our flesh is dying. He is saving our soul, but the two are intricately designed, they're, they're, they're one and the same. So it does matter what I do. If I take my body, which is, is, is referred to as the temple, and I take the temple of God and I mix it with a prostitute in the flesh, then it corrupts the inward part of my body, the soul. So we would say, or scripture says, it matters what you do with your body. Now, there are things with our bodies that we are to do and not to do. But a Jezebel spirit wants you to separate the two and say, you know what? God doesn't really care if you have sex with somebody before marriage. He doesn't really care if you're living together because he understands that you don't get all your social security benefits if you get married and you'll lose this and you'll lose that. He understands this and this. No, 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 God clearly demands that our bodies are submitted to our spirit. And the spirit is to dominate the flesh because if, if the flesh lets go and I just do whatever I want, if I just talk to my wife however I want, if I just eat and consume whatever I want, if I just do whatever I want in the flesh, it has consequences. We saw that, we've seen that in politics where politicians say, hey, what I do in my private life doesn't have anything to do with what I do in my public politician life. No, yes it does, yeah. If you take a bribe privately, you'll take a bribe politically. If you lie over here about this, you'll lie about that. So Jezebel spirit, number one, wants us to eat food that comes from a demon, demon theology. Secondly, it teaches us to be sexually perverse. Sexual perversion is rampant in the church. Let me say it again, sexual perversion, you expected me to say rampant in the world. Rampant in Hollywood, Nashville, downtown Austin, on that side of, no, no, no. It's rampant in the church. We are consuming sexual perversion. And we are allowing that to taint the way that we view sex, the way we view the world, that we view the men and women, marriage. And, and this spirit is wanting us to compromise and say, well, it's okay, God loves us anyways. Well, it's okay, God understands, oh, it's okay, God just wants us to be happy. That's all the message of Jezebel. And here's what happens, Jezebel, when Jezebel gets you, when Jezebel gets you to compromise, then it traps you and dominates you. So a Jezebel spirit's desire is to dominate you. A religious spirit's desire is to quench the Holy Ghost in you. An anti-Christ spirit's desire is for you to pave the way for the anti-Christ person and system to be acceptable to you, that you won't stand up against it. You won't rebel or not rebel, but, but, what's the right word? That you won't protest against it. A Jezebel spirit can only operate when the fourth spirit on your paper is listed, and that is an Ahab spirit. Now, we talked about this last time. An Ahab spirit desires for you to be passive and to submit your authority that's been given to you by God to the enemy. An Ahab spirit is very prevalent in our world. For example, and I'll just pick the 50s, I wasn't alive in nineteen fifty's. Some of you watching were, some of you were young, some of you might've been in your teenage years. But in the nineteen fifty's, traditionally, by and large, if a man was walking through the parking lot and he saw another man yelling at his spouse, at his wife, or yelling at a woman and belittling her, and maybe using physical force to intimidate her. Back in the 50s, a man would have ran up to that other man and said, hey, hey, we don't, we don't treat women like that. I don't know what's your problem buddy, but you need to back off. And, and we would have, we would have been a little more chivalrous, chivalry? Chivalrous, we would have been a little more rescuing of those that we deemed to be being taken advantage of. Today, we live in a culture that says, hey, listen, you need to stay out of other people's business. You need to turn and look the other way. What they do is their business and you don't need to get involved. That is an Ahab spirit. An Ahab spirit says, you know what, we're not going to teach our kids any kind of religion. We're not going to teach our kids anything about God. We're going to let them grow up and discover it on their own. We're going to pass off our responsibility. You know what, we're not going to discipline our kids. Are you kidding me? We're not going to do anything to little Johnny or little Suzie that would ever tell them that they're wrong. Now, I'm not talking about spanking versus no spanking, I'm just talking about discipline, proper discipline. So an Ahab spirit is very prevalent where an Ahab spirit declares, there's no winners, there's no losers. There's just everybody, you know, no, 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 sometimes teams win, sometimes teams lose. So this, this passivity isn't acceptable, it is, it is skirting off our responsibility. The last part about Ahab spirit, we talked a little bit about it last week, I think. Back when I was growing up in the early eighties, the average video game maker designed video games for boys from the ages of ten to fourteen. Somewhere in that early teenage years, video games were designed for them. Now, today, video games are designed for men that are from their twenties up into their mid to late thirties. This failure to launch, Matthew McConaughey's favorite movie, you know, famous movie, failure to launch. This idea that it's okay that you, you know, you just don't grow up, that is an Ahab spirit. So these four spirits are end time spirits. Now, demons run in packs, they run in gangs, they run in groups. Just like a gang in the real world today, the, the physical world. You may have one that's really good at breaking into cars or busting locks. You may have another guy that's really good at hand-to-hand combat. Another guy is really good at, at, you know, you know, handheld robberies or whatever. Gang members, gangs don't all specialize in one thing, they have their, their, their different members for different reasons. Well, demons run in packs. And so where there is a religious spirit, there's a Jezebel spirit usually. Where there's a Jezebel spirit, there always has to be an Ahab spirit most of the time. Where there are these three spirits, an anti-Christ spirit will start to rule and reign and dominate over them. And so what's happening in this end time church, this end time society in 2020 that we're facing, we're facing a barrage from the enemy. Now, the enemy always has to have a gate or an opening to come into. The enemy, all through scripture, Jesus says, hey, listen, if the front door is locked, I'm paraphrasing or summarizing here, if the front door is locked, the enemy will go up through another opening. He'll try to get in a window or he'll try to break in through another opening. When, when we talk about demonic spirits, we have to understand that if we shut the door and we lock the door through the power and the blood of Jesus, through the Holy Spirit, then the enemy cannot have access to us. But when we open our mouths and we let out word curses on ourselves and we say something like, you know, every time the flu season's here, I get it. Well, we're cursing ourselves with our words and we're opening ourselves up to a spirit of sickness or disease. Every time we open up our mouth and curse somebody else, we're allowing a, a spirit of revenge or bitterness or, or irritation, or I'm so frustrated every time, every time. Murphy's Law, Murphy's Law, every time I plan something good, something's got to go wrong. Those things we've got to not say in the Holy Spirit, you know, in the, we've got to learn to control what we say. My point is this, demons need openings. So when these spirits try to bust in through our television, through our programs, through our Facebook, through our media, through our computers, through our conversations, through our books, our, our whatever, when these spirits try to come in, we've got to identify them and kick them out. We've got to push them out of our workplace, our churches, our families, our own lives. Now, this is what happened on the cross. When we talk about the altar of the cross, the cross was an altar. We bring our sacrifice to an altar. We have altars in the church. So at the altar, we, we kneel, like Pastor Rod had us kneel this, this week at church and it was powerful. He had us come and pray at the altar. At the altars where we lay down our sacrifice, we lay down our pride, we lay down our sin. The altar that Jesus went to was called the cross. The cross is where the believer got its freedom and power. We were set free from the penalty of sin. All of our pride, all of our shame, all of our rage, all of our anger, all of our sexual perversion, we give it to Jesus, he dealt with that on the cross. So one side of the cross is bloody, the other side of the cross is beautiful. One side is all of our garbage, the other side is all of our freedom. The cross of Jesus ushered in the ability for the Holy Spirit. So I want you to say out loud, Holy Spirit, come on, say it, one, two, three, Holy Spirit. When we talk about end time spirits, I get a lot of attention when I talk about the demonic side. And then people go, oh yeah, the Holy Spirit, oh yeah, that guy, okay, we got it, okay, we all need that. No, 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 the Holy Spirit then endows or gives gifts and mantles of anointing. He gives different coverings and giftings to his church. The Holy Spirit is the end time power to the saint. The Holy Spirit is the only thing, the only person that will allow you to navigate through the opposition. Without the Holy Spirit, you will succumb to the voice of the enemy. When we have and we listen and we obey the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit will lead us from being taken captive as a Christian by the enemy. Now, the Holy Spirit is going to lead us in this end times. Here's my, here, here's a statement. Without the Holy Spirit, Christian men and women will consume the gospel of the anti-Christ. Without the Holy Spirit, Christian men and women will listen to a religious voice. They will succumb to the doctrine and perversion of Jezebel. They will pass off their responsibility and give it to somebody else. And then they will be prime targets and suspects, or prime targets and suspect to the doctrine of the... And then they will be prime targets and suspects, or prime targets and suspect to the doctrine of the Antichrist. An Ahab spirit tells you in the church, hey, listen, don't tell your friends about Jesus. Just bring him to church, give that responsibility to the preacher. That's an Ahab spirit. You don't have to really know your Bible. That's for Pastor Cameron to teach it to you. That's an Ahab spirit. You don't really need to to pray. Oh, your your wife prays enough. You don't really need to do it. Uh, you know, once a week prayer over your food is fine. That's that's plenty. That's an Ahab spirit. An Ahab spirit, you will not cast out demons. You will put up with demons. An Ahab spirit, you will not lay hands on sick people. You'll just say, oh, I'm praying for you, brother, sister, I'm praying. Oh, it is so bad that you've got that issue going on. Oh, how horrible for you. I'm so sorry that you're going through that. Well, do something about it. You've been given the power to change it. An Ahab spirit is, oh, human trafficking is horrible. Then change it. Enforce your authority, your power. Go forth and operate in the Holy Spirit. Now, on your paper, I'm gonna talk about mantles. A mantle is like this. Stacy, would you hand me those two shirts right there? My wife is gonna hand me two shirts. This idea just came to me. There's the Holy Spirit anointing that God gives to all of us. But there's different mantles that we talked about. Now, we talked about this last week and I have a definition for a mantle. So I have two shirts here. I'll use them as an example in just a minute. A mantle is a variation of meaning uh in the Bible. The word mantle basically means a covering, a cloak, an article of clothing. Uh, the word cloak is also used as robe. The word robe is the Holy Spirit. When you talk about it, end time revelation, an end time revival, an end time anointing, there is a a cloak, a covering that God gave to Elijah. So when the man Elijah was on the earth, God cloaked him, robed him, covered him with an anointing for Elijah. There was another man that's listed here named Jehu. Jehu wasn't Elijah. He was cloaked with a different anointing. He had a different mantle, a different uh cloak on him. Now, there are many cloaks, many mantles, so don't get, don't get caught up in just two options. Joseph had a robe of many colors. Um, Jesus, and I've I've listed some verses here, and we'll talk about being clothed in righteousness. Here's what I'm bringing up. God has gifted you with an end time anointing. Some of you are cloaked like with a doctor's robe. And and you you got like a white, uh you know, a doctor's uh schmo- smock or or uh whatever you call it, where he comes in and and he's dressed in white and he's got his name here and some pins in his pocket and he's got his clipboard and and some of you have been cloaked with healing. Some of you have the cloak or the mantle of healing. Some of you um are have the cloak of healing, but you're not healing the physical. You look more like a a psychologist, like my my wonderful, beautiful cousin, Sheree. You you you're a professional in your appearance and your brain, your mind is brilliant. I mean, you are, you are, you you just got everything up here and and you have the ability to heal people's minds. You've been cloaked for end time anointing. Some of you are cloaked uh as my father in law, uh and and you can, you can fix anything. So you you kinda got like a mechanic's cloak on you. You've got, you know, you got some grease here and you got scuffed knees here and 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 my point is, is that end time anointings from the Holy Spirit, God has given each of you, like my mom, the ability to pray in the spirit, to to go to war against the enemy uh from her bedroom, from her house, and call down Holy Ghost fire. You have the ability to do something in this end days. And when we look at what scripture says, he says, you've been cloaked with robes of righteousness. Look here on your paper, Galatians three twenty seven. For as many of you who were baptized into Christ have put on Christ. You've put on the Messiah deliverer. Now, he's the Messiah, he's the one. But you've put on this ability to go rescue people, to go deliver people. An Antichrist spirit wants to tell you, you can't do nothing. No, you can do anything through Christ who gives you strength. It's no longer you that lives, but Christ that lives through you. What does Christ do? He's a savior. He's a Messiah. He's a provider. He's a counselor. He's a healer. He's a doctor. He's a, he's a a food preparer. He he's giving out bread of life. He's serving water. He is doing, he's visiting the prisoner. He's encouraging. See, God says, put on Christ. Don't put off Christ and put on Ahab. See, Ahab has a cloak. Uh, Jezebel has a dress to her. An Antichrist spirit, uh a religious spirit. I I wanna say this real quick. I was talking to a pastor friend of mine just two days ago. He was describing a person in his church. And in his description, he said, Cameron, the guy looks like Moses. So I just envisioned this old guy, big burly hair, you know, uh bushy beard and and he says, he looks like Moses. So he just made that comment. And then about five minutes later, we go back to this guy in his church that is causing great problems. Every time my friend preach, preaches, he comes in and tells him, uh, he didn't, he didn't uh use the right Greek definition. He didn't use the right Hebrew definition. Uh, he mentioned Billy Graham and Billy Graham's a false prophet. If he, if he knew what he was doing, he wouldn't be giving kudos to Billy Graham and and all this stuff and then and he's telling him, hey, listen, you baptize people wrong. Uh, you can't take communion that way. And all of a sudden, the Lord's like giving me this word saying, hey, friend of mine, pastor friend of mine, this guy is operating in a religious spirit mixed with a pride spirit. And then the Lord says, hey, Cameron, do you remember how he described him in the earlier conversation? He's physically looking like the spiritual robe he's wearing. Now, that's deep. You can identify people in their spirit. A lot of times, by the way that they manifest themselves in the physical. There's this correlation. You'll see it come out, cuz they put on the robe of an unholy spirit. You can also see people who have a mantle or the robe of righteousness on them. You can spot them in the grocery store. You can spot them in the workplace. Before you met them, you saw the robe of righteousness on them. Ephesians six, stand therefore having fastened on the belt of truth and put on the breastplate of righteousness. Put it on like a shirt, like a, like a bulletproof vest. My friend wears to work every day, a a a a Kevlar vest. He has to put it on. Genesis three, after Adam and Eve sinned, God made for Adam and his wife garments of skin and clothed them. Revelation nineteen, let us exalt and rejoice and give glory, for the marriage land uh has come. The bride has made herself ready. It was granted to her uh to clothe herself with fine linen, bright and pure, for the fine linen is the righteous deeds of the saints. It's gonna get deep. Isaiah sixty one ten, I will greatly rejoice in the Lord. My soul shall exalt in my God, for he has clothed me with garments of salvation, covered me with the robe of righteousness. As a bridegroom decks himself like a priest with a beautiful headdress, as a bride adorns herself with jewels. Blessed are those, Revelation twenty two, who washed their robes so that they may be, have the right to the tree of life and may enter the city Zion heaven by its gates. The Holy Spirit has clothed you with an end time mantle anointing of the Holy Spirit. Don't put on a robe of sexual perversion. Don't exchange your robes of righteousness for robes of passivity. Don't exchange your robes of righteousness, taking up your cross, doing the work God's called you because you want to be comfortable. Don't exchange the work clothes for comfortable clothes. Some of you know exactly what I'm saying. Don't exchange that it's it's gonna, you're gonna have to fight to do the work that God's called you to do. But the fight will be well worth it because there's an end time spirit that wants you to shut down. Jesus through the cross has given you power over the enemy. Do not say out of your mouth that the world is going to hell in a handbasket. It's not. The world is headed towards great revival. Now, here is the crazy thing. Many, many, many revivals come out of intense pressure or intense struggle. When Rome in two hundred A.D., hundred A.D., between one hundred and three hundred A.D., when Rome was persecuting Christians, throwing them to the lions, dipping them in, boiling them in oil, crucifying them on crosses, persecuting them, the church exploded. The church grew under great tribulation. The Bible says, when when we get pressed, out of us comes the good stuff. When we get pressed, out of us comes the good stuff. When we get pressed, my pride gets put away. My my guilt and shame gets put away and all of a sudden the goodness of God comes out. Are you with me? Put on the mantle, put on the anointing, put on the Holy Spirit. In your paperwork, Acts two, Jesus, and and I wanna read this cuz cuz uh this is what we wanna get to. So Acts two, verse two, and it says, when the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all in one accord in one place. And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as a mighty rushing wind and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them divided tongues as fire and one sat upon each of them. Listen, there was one tongue of fire that sat upon each person. That was a different anointing for Billy than he gave Suzie. Uh, uh, Joseph over here got a different anointing, a different tongue, a different mission than than Jose over here. Jose got a different mission than Akeem. Uh, all these different men and women got a specific mission mantle for them. Now, when you go back up to Acts, chapter one, Jesus says, hey, listen, wait in Jerusalem for the Holy Spirit. God says to us today, wait on me in the early hours of the morning. Not just wait, sitting around twiddling your thumbs. Serve me. Wait on me like a waiter or a waitress. Serve me. And as you're serving me, I'll give you your mission. As you serve me, I'll give you your com- uh co-mission, commandment for today. Look at, uh, go back at the at the top. I got ahead of myself. Go back up to Acts, chapter one. Um, and I want us to look at verse nine. And this is talking about the end time return of Christ. And so we're gonna talk about Matthew twenty four and twenty five, the end time, and I wanna talk about the rapture a little bit. Verse nine, chapter one, verse nine. Now, when he had spoken these things, he being Jesus, while they watched, he, Jesus, was taken up and a cloud received them out of their sight. We're in Acts, chapter one, verse nine, Acts, chapter one, verse nine, the top of your page. When when he was taken up, a cloud received Jesus out of their sight. And while they all looked steadfastly towards heaven, as he went up, behold, two men stood by them in white apparel. These are angels. So so let me paint the picture before I, before I I read more. Jesus is just preaching them, saying, hey, wait on me, wait for the baptism of the Holy Spirit. When you get the power of the Holy Spirit, you're gonna go to Judea, Samaria, the uttermost ends of the earth. There's about five hundred people in attendance, uh um uh history tells us. Jesus is now ari- ascending. He is, he is physically, spiritually being ascended into heaven, just like Elijah was was caught up by a chariot and and he throws down a physical mantle, a physical anointing. He throws down a, out of his chariot, whether it was ten feet in the air or fifty feet in the air, he throws out his mantle and Elisha captures it. Jesus in like fashion is ascending into heaven. So as he's going up, he's giving them this these final words. And he says this, look at this, verse ten. While they looked steadfastly towards heaven, now, now, if you and I had been in attendance, we'd be going, man, did you see him? Where'd he go? Oh, I could see him. I could barely see him. I could see him. Kinda like watching a balloon or a or or a rocket go up, you know, you you watch it to the very last. I could still see a little bit of it, you know, up there. As they're watching, these two angels show up and say, hey, what are you staring into heaven for? Look at verse eleven. Um, well, let me, let me, let me just read verse ten. While they looked steadfastly towards heaven and as he went up, Jesus, behold, two men stood by them in white apparel, who also said, men of Galilee, why do you stand gazing into heaven? Now, that's a deep comment. That's a deep statement. It's a deep verse. On the surface, it's just like, oh, hey, why are you looking in the sky? Why are you gazing up there instead of now doing what he just told you to do? Let's get to work. That's what they're saying. Hey, 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 the action's not up there. Back to planet earth now. Now, here's a flip side to what they say. Now, here's a flip side to that statement. The same Jesus who was taken up from you into heaven, and I highlighted it, will also come in like manner as you so saw him go into heaven. What's that mean? Hey, listen, the same Jesus that ascended in front of those five hundred people, in the same like manner, and I believe in the exact same physical location, will come back. And when he comes back, it is too late to get right. You gotta hear that. When he comes back, it is too late to then go get oil for your lamp. It is too late to go get forgiveness from those who you're seeking forgiveness. As he comes back, it's too late to put on your mantle real quick. Oh, let me put on my my robes of righteousness real. It's too late. When, as he comes back, it's too late to pray. It's too late to go feed the homeless. It's too late to go lay hands on sick people. Time's up. Uh, just as he ascended, he will descend. Now, that's deep. If we'll grasp it, if we'll really let this sink in and say, you know what? There is a limited space. There's a limited time that you have. Your time is short. What are you gonna do with it? Turn to Matthew twenty four. Matthew twenty four, um verse. Well, there's no way we can read two chapters of scripture and dissect through it all tonight. But I wanna, I wanna drag, let me, let me just kinda start off Matthew twenty four. Jesus is with his best friends, the disciples. They asked Jesus, hey, when will the world end? When will you return? Now, Jesus gives these two chapters. They're all red letters. This is all Jesus for two chapters straight, answering the question that many of us are asking. When will Jesus return? When will Jesus come back? Are are we at the end days? Is is the return of Christ near? Is is the rapture almost here? What what's gonna happen? Jesus spends two chapters answering this for them and for you. If you don't read any other Bible scriptures, if you just don't read anything else, read these two chapters over and over and over and over. And every time you read it, I promise you, God will bring something else out to you. He'll bring it to the surface. So let's touch base with a couple main things that are in these two passages of scripture, these two chapters. So in verse three, he sat on the mount of Olives. The disciples came to him privately saying, hey, Jesus, we're your best friends. Tell us the secrets. Tell us, when will these things be and what will be the sign of your coming? Now, the crazy thing is, he hasn't even left yet. Are you with me? I mean, his disciples are living on faith. Okay, Jesus, you're not gonna build your earthly kingdom today, but are you coming back in two years? I mean, you're talking about the cross and all that. We don't know all about all that, but uh, are are you gonna come back like in three years or, well, you know, when will your return be? And the end of the age. Now, those are two separate things. Like, when will you return and when's the end of the age? What what's the, you know, how's this thing gonna end? Jesus says, verse four, take heed that no one deceives you. Now, here's a crazy statement. Could you and could I be deceived? If you answered no, I respectfully would ask you to reconsider. And just read scripture going, you know what, maybe I have been deceived. Now, the deception is not. Just from outside the church. Sometimes the deception comes from really good intentioned. Sunday school teachers, pastors, deacons, uh, Bible study leaders, Pastor Cameron. Sometimes we as pastors or Bible teachers, professors, seminary, authors of books. We really write with good intention, we speak with good intention, but sometimes we're flawed. Now, that's very different than a false prophet that is, is, is. Uh, you know, adamantly preaching a false gospel. But he says, don't let anybody deceive you, so I never want you to trust just what I say. I want you to take what I say, take it to scripture and then dissect, throw out the bad, keep the good, are you with me? That's with any pastor. As I read this, I go, I, I'm like, God, have I been deceived? Have I been deceived by Christian tradition? Now, there is, again, we're gonna see these four spirits that we talked about earlier, operating even in our theology of end times. So he says, take heed Cameron, that no one deceives you, for many will come in my name, saying I am the Christ. Now, just a few crazy people come and say, I'm Jesus. And nobody believes them, I mean, they get like twelve followers and, and it always ends bad. And they claim to be Jesus, but many billions of people follow false prophets. That say, I'm the Christ. Please see the difference, I'm the way to heaven. I've got the truth. Hey, listen, join our secret society and we'll teach you the truth. Now, hey, come to me and I'll show you one way to heaven, I'll show you, uh, that you are God. That all the answers are inside of you. Hey, listen, come to me, I'm the real deal, that guy, Jesus was just. My prophet or one of many prophets, but I am the way. Very different. He says, for many will come to you in my name, saying I am the Christ and will deceive many. And you will hear of wars and rumors of wars, see that you're not troubled. For all these things must come to pass, but the end is not yet. That's a scary verse. Hey, listen, there's gonna be wars. It's gonna be calamity, trials, tribulations, but the end's not yet. Nation, verse seven, will rise against nation, kingdom against kingdom. There will be famines, pestilence, earthquakes in various places, all these are the beginnings of sorrows. Then they will deliver you up to tribulation, kill you, you'll be hated by all nations for my name's sake. Then many will be offended, betray one another, hate one another. Then many false prophets will rise up, deceive many, and because lawlessness will abound, the love of many will grow cold. Verse thirteen, but he who endures to the end shall be saved. Now, there is an idea out there, and let me be very clear. I completely believe in the rapture. The timing of the rapture. Is what I am submitting to God. Sometimes we get caught up in saying, well, I believe that the timing of the rapture is gonna happen at this point. Or at this point, or this point. And so therefore, we start to base our life on something that is not concrete. So there is a lot of. A lot of things that concern me right now in the body of Christ. And that's the mindset of, hey, listen, God's gonna rescue me out of this thing. I'm not going through all this, you know, I can't wait till I get my rapture ticket and escape tribulation. Now, there's difference in tribulation and the tribulation, or the great tribulation. But I want us to be always cognizant or always aware of the idea or the possibility. That we don't know the timing. So if we believe that we're going to be zapped out before any calamity, that is not biblical. If we believe that we're gonna get zapped out before any anti-Christ takeover. Or any kinda anti-Christ spiritual, uh, uh, dominance. That is not biblical, if we think that we're gonna just be taken away before anything bad. That's not biblical, the reason we in America believe it so wholeheartedly. Is cuz we're not going through persecution like the communist Chinese are today. If you're a believer and you live in North Korea today, under Kim Jong-un's power and authority. And you're caught with the Bible, you will go to prison and never be seen again. And you and I would call that great tribulation. Even though it's not the tribulation. If we lived in Syria today and our neighbors who are of a different religion. Come in and burn down our, our village because we're known as a Christian village. And they torture our children in front of us so that we'll renounce Christ. And then if that doesn't work, then they'll torture our spouse, and if that doesn't work, then they'll torture us. And ultimately, they're getting us, wanting us to confess their God instead of our God. If we lived there today in twenty twenty, thousands and thousands of believers have been killed and murdered this year alone. For their belief in Christ, if we were under that persecution, we may not believe this idea that we'll just get. Taken away before anything bad happens. So what I want us to get in our mind very concretely is, oh, God. Regardless of when you return, help me to protect what I consume today. Because a mindset that says, hey, listen, uh, you know, one day in, in, you know, in, in a year. The anti-Christ is gonna show up and he's just gonna turn the world, uh, you know, all around and. And at that point, I'm not gonna take the mark, I'm not gonna take the mark. Listen, the mark will, the mark of the beast will not be forced upon you. It's not gonna be, you know, like, just insert something or tattoo you or brand you. It's going to be something people willfully take. Oh, man, I want that thing. Well, you know, I can't buy food for my family and the Bible tells me to be a good provider. Listen, it will be consumed. It will be something that people desire. And we willfully take, listen, you can't force me to deny Christ. You can't force a confession and force me, I mean, you can write a confession, Cameron hates God, Cameron denies Jesus. And then you could take my hand and through torture and abuse and, and, and with my hand, write my name, but I didn't sign it. That's not, you know, just cuz my name's on it, doesn't mean I willfully did it. The danger is, does Cameron today willfully consume theology from end time spirits? Do I willfully watch that that I shouldn't watch, say that which I shouldn't say, deny my responsibility? Do I willfully succumb to the anti-Christ pressure? Because if I do it today in these little areas, I'll do it tomorrow in a big area. That's the problem like with this pandemic and, and the mask rule and all this. There's a lot of people that are like, man, if we'll, if we'll give over our rights as, as American and constitution to this. Well, one day we'll give it over to something bigger, that's the mindset. So when you're reading Matthew twenty four and twenty five. Please don't read it going, oh, well, I guess, I guess Jesus already raptured the church and none of this is gonna happen to me. So this doesn't really belong to me. Listen, there, i- if you just read verse twenty one, for then there will be great tribulation. And, and, and if you just read the verses I highlighted on your paperwork and, 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 uh, I'll, I'll find it here in, in one of it, it says. For the sake of the elect, God rescues the church. Listen, those are, those are words that indicate children of God. So I want you to read these, these two chapters on your own and, and I didn't get there and, and that's probably on purpose. Cuz God doesn't want me to tell you what it says. But I, I want you to read Matthew twenty four and twenty five. When you get to Matthew twenty five, I want you to really stop and read the parable of the ten virgins. The parable of the ten virgins should scare us. It should scare us, I was talking to a pastor, a prophet, of actually a prophet friend of mine today, out of Ada, Oklahoma. And, and, and we just were, were going, oh, God. If we don't spend time praying today. Building up our spirit man, if we're not reading the word of God, feeding this spirit man. And you return, then we'll be like the foolish virgins who didn't have any oil in their lamps. Now, that whole story is talking to believers, these, these aren't unsaved women, these are saved women. They all go to sleep, it's a crazy statement. All the disciples went to sleep in the garden of Gethsemane, Jesus shook them all up, can you not praise me for one hour? In the, in the, in the parable where the, where the, uh, where the field is sown with bad seed. It says, the workers were asleep, listen, we're, we're sleeping, Cameron Corbin has slept. And Jesus has come in and shaken me, Cameron, can you not wake up? Can you not wake up to what's happening? Can you not wake up and pray for one hour? Hey, Cameron, can you not wake up and see what you're watching is really destroying? Can you not wake up and see what's happening? See, I wanna be the wise virgin that comes in and has oil in my lamp. Cuz when the return happens. When the return happens. Please hear me, it's gonna happen, the rapture, the coming, the return of Christ, it's happening. I don't know when. And if I get lulled to sleep and I start to consume the doctrine of demons. And I start to allow toleration of sin. And I start to pass off my responsibility. I just named two spirits there, you figure them out, and, and then I start to be seduced by religion. Well, I'm a preacher, I'm doing the right thing, I put money in the plate, I go to church. I don't cuss, I don't run around with women, I'm, I'm not murderer on death row, I'm a good guy. No, that's a religious spirit. If I succumb to these things. I am like the foolish virgin that let the oil out of my lamp. The next parable is the parable of the talents. And, and that's where we, we are saying, God's given you a mantle, he's given you an anointing. You may have one, two, or five, it doesn't matter. What matters is you double it, I was talking to Pastor Rod Corson yesterday, you gotta double the one talent God gave you. That's a commandment. Hey, you didn't even take what I gave you and use it to convert one person? So all of your life, you couldn't take your gift and, and use it for one person? Think about that. What are you doing with what God's given you? The next, the next one is the judgment. And it's scary stuff, these are real Bible verses. It's, it, it's, it's real stuff. So God's calling us as a church to get ready. Not just for the return of Christ. Get ready for the greatest revival the world has ever seen. Get ready to spread the gospel like never before. Get ready to lay hands on sick people, get ready to cast out demons. Get ready to speak in tongues, yes, tongues. A spiritual language that God has given you, a gifting. Get ready for words of wisdom, words of knowledge, get ready to discern demons. Discerning of spirits. Get ready to dissect, get ready to lay hands on sick people, get ready to do miracles. My prophet friend, the, the, today, he was saying, you know what, a time's coming when people will get transported. Like Philip got transported from baptizing the eunuch and then he gets taken all the way over here to another city. Like Star Trek, Spock, beam me up Scotty, that's not science fiction, that came from the Bible. That's real stuff, get ready to see the dead raised. Get ready to see miracles happen, get ready to walk on water, get ready to feed. Five thousand with the Lunchable, get ready to change the world. Don't get ready for the rapture, just don't get ready for that. Cuz what happens is, well, I'm getting ready for the rapture, well, what are you doing? Nothing, I'm just getting ready for the rapture. Well, what are you doing about it? Oh, I ain't doing nothing, Jesus is returning, hell, hell's coming, the devil's rampant, Hollywood's corrupt. Governments suck, the schools are horrible, a- and, and we're just, we're Ahab. Ahab, we're just passing off our responsibility, if you wanna get ready for the rapture. Get ready for judgment, get ready for accountability, go do the thing, the mantle, take up the anointing. Go preach, go teach, go evangelize. Go feed, go, go sell everything you got, give it to the poor, follow Jesus. It's time to get radical. Jesus says, if your hand cannot stop stealing, cut it off. Better to enter heav- heaven, better to enter heaven without a hand. Than not to go at all, if, if your eye can't stop from sinning, if you can't look, you know, then, then get rid of it, be different. If you're ready for the rapture, then, then do something about it. Cuz the sleep, the church is asleep, the church is just like, yeah, Jesus is coming soon, he is coming soon. Well, what are you doing? Oh, I'm putting money in the stock market, man, I gotta, I gotta save for my retirement. Why? If he's coming so soon? Well, I'm getting an RV, we gotta tour America, I wanna see all those great sights. Oh, okay, well, what are we getting ready for? Get ready. By going out and doing what God's called you to do. We've got a short window, it's worth the pain. A woman that goes through childbirth, once she holds that baby, she doesn't remember the pain. Once you see Jesus, you will not worry about the price that it, that you paid. God bless you, we'll see you next Tuesday, six thirty, same place, same time, we'll pick up here. But we're gonna dig into a little bit more about Matthew twenty four and twenty five. But we're gonna get into the deception, there's a deception that's here and we'll talk about it more in depth next week. God bless you, thank you for joining us, see you next time.